Do whether they extend it out. I think that Tito is correct.
Can anybody see the agenda that I'm sharing?
No.
No, okay.
Not yet. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. We can hear you.
Great, thank you. Maybe I need to get a baseball hat for the Yankees.
You guys see the agenda now or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yo, how are the renovations coming to the, uh, the boardroom?
Um, they are nearing completion. You mean the, the chambers, city council chambers?
Yes, chambers.
The major structural stuff is done. Now they're trying to upgrade some of the sound system and some of the other features like that.
All right. Did they fix that light that used to buzz and then like half explode right in the middle of the meeting or is that still gonna?
That may not have changed that much.
They changed those lights. Those are LEDs now. Uh, the, the humming is a lot less annoying, but it's still, there's still a little humming.
I want to say those were sodium vapor lights that you're talking about. Now they've been replaced with LEDs.
Right. All right, uh, five fifteen. All right, uh, we're all set to start?
Yes, um, looks like we have a quorum.
All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the March Meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, it does look like we have more than four members, but we will do roll call first to make sure. So the first item on the agenda is, uh, roll call. Uh, Mario DeFolio.
Here.
Paul O'Brien. Paul's not here yet. Uh, Joe D'Angelo.
Here.
Chris Judgeeats. I think he said he was not gonna be here. Uh, Kelly Weiss. And Manny Priest.
Kelly, um, Kelly's logged in.
We can't seem to hear Kelly when she talks.
She's, she's able to unmute. So there's nothing I can do on my end.
What if we did this? What if we, when we have to do anything where we vote, um, I'll call on Kelly and if she's okay keeping her camera on, she can just put a thumbs up or a thumbs down, is it? Or right, um. Oh, you could, uh, you can type in the chat as well, I think at the bottom, right?
Yeah, I started chatting with her, so we'll, we'll try to get it worked out. Um.
Okay.
Is it a new computer?
What's that?
I had similar issues with newer computers.
Oh.
Where they haven't been permit, given permission to use the audio or to use the microphone or Zoom or for this type of service.
Luckily, there's only one item on the agenda tonight, so if, um, we'll try and keep an eye on Kelly and if she starts waving her hands in front of the camera, we'll look to the chat. Uh, to see what she has to say. Um, all right, well Kelly is present, um, and did Paul or Manny-
We just confirmed Kelly, can you actually hear us? Could you give me a thumbs up if you can hear us? I thank you. She can hear us. Keep going.
All right, so we got, uh, Mario, Joe, Kelly, myself, so that's four members that are here and that does constitute quorum and we can proceed. Uh, if anybody else comes on, we'll, uh, make a note, uh, as we go. All right, so the only item on our agenda for tonight is a seeker determination. So in this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear and after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. Uh, to all our applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you do please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. All right, so tonight. Our first and only seeker determination. Is for the applicant. Amicus New York LLC. The project address is 105 Murray Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a one unit dwelling into a two unit dwelling with a three bedroom unit and a four bedroom unit in the R3 multi-unit dwelling district. All right, is there anybody from Amicus, New York, um, the?
Um, this is Kyle Weeks. I am representing the architect, Shannon Anderson Architect. Our client, Paul, who represents Amicus, I don't. Do you see if he has logged in on the screen that I can see? I don't see his name.
Doesn't look like I see anybody other than you Kyle that's, uh, not associated with the planning department or planning commission.
Paul's not logged in.
Okay, so would it be okay if I just gave you the information that we submitted and the introduction to that project on his behalf?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, all right. So this is for 105 Murray Street. It is an existing two-story building with a full basement. It is currently, uh, occupied as a one dwelling unit. There are seven bedrooms total. So currently, um, it is occupied by some Binghamton University students. Um, it's a group of seven that rents all seven bedrooms within the, um, within the property. And what Amicus would like to do is they would like to separate it into two dwelling units. Um, the dwelling unit on the first floor would have three bedrooms. There is an existing kitchen on the first floor. Um, on the second level, there would be four bedrooms and they will be putting in a new kitchen. So I think the key here is that there is no addition or deletion of bedrooms. It's to stay exactly as it is currently. It's really just a matter of changing it from a one dwelling unit to a two dwelling unit. Um, on the site, so we provided you with a site plan that you have up on the screen now. Um, where we looked into, um, some of the restrictions for code. Um, I believe that through discussions with Tito, the sort of way that we're proposing this is congregate living. Um, and so that's where some of the distinctions in terms of, you know, the setback and the parking and requirements were pulled from. So I think another big thing with the site plan is there's currently in the back of the site, an existing two-car garage. That's going to be removed under a separate project. It's sort of dilapidated at this point. That's gonna get removed. But none of the impervious surface, there's no plan for changing any of that, any of the existing vegetation. There's an existing treated wood deck in the back and covered porches on the side and the front. That's all gonna remain as is. Um, let's see what else. So we're showing provisions for parking, we're trash storage, snow storage. Um, describing the existing conditions, just kind of trying to go through what we've got here on this plan. Um, we also provided you with the schematic level, what they're gonna do with the property in terms of making that conversion from the one dwelling unit into the two. So you'll see that on the first floor, the first dw- the first floor unit's gonna be accessed from an existing back entrance. And an existing side entrance that they're currently not using. That's actually the, on the other side of the, if you wanna move to the other side. Yeah, there you go. Um. So now, when you enter from the front, you'll actually be going upstairs to the second level unit. So that's a big, there's sort of a distinction in that way. Um, and then on the second level, you'll see where, um, there's currently a bathroom. They're changing that over into the bathrooms in the back and a, and a kitchen sort of in the min- middle on that right side of the space. And then downstairs, it's really a matter of changing, there's a existing living room, but that's gonna become bedroom number two. And they're kind of splitting the living space between the right side of the plan and the left side of the plan. But that kitchen in the back and those bathrooms are all existing on the first floor. That's the current, um, schematic proposal that Paul wants to do for the, for the property. So how's that for an explanation? Does that give enough information for consideration?
Yeah, I think that was great. Um, are you okay if we ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Anybody have any questions they want to ask?
Hey, this is Tito. I, I just wanted to make a comment if I could.
Yes.
Uh, just to clarify something from the staff report that, uh, I guess it wa- it wasn't written super clearly. The reason the parking spaces are being called non-compliant is because there's a minimum driveway width of nine feet. Most of the driveway meets that requirement, but the first floor entry, the covered stairway on the side of the building. Makes that portion of the driveway too narrow. And so everything behind that point technically is not a compliant space. And only the parking space before that, that, uh, covered entrance, uh, can be counted to meet the parking requirement. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that, um, this is a local landmark and so the planning commission has the authority to reduce the parking requirement, but you certainly don't have to do that, um, if, if parking is a concern for you.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure how everybody else feels, but, but we recently revised the code. Um, specifically to limit the ability to do some of these types of renovations. If there wasn't enough room to provide onsite parking, so I think parking probably is an issue. Uh, for this project. Um, so what was the total number of required parking spaces then?
Five.
All right. So five parking spaces required. We potentially could reduce that down to a lower number if we wanted to, but five is required, so.
Tito, can you go back to the floor plan? Is it, has the applicant given any gap, consideration to moving that first entrance, floor entrance for the living room? To some space at the back of the building, like where the garbage facility is right now, so that it, it doesn't impede the driveway? Sort of like into the back of the kitchen?
They do have, uh, they do have an entrance back there. I'm not sure, uh, how maybe you were required to have two entrances?
No, two entrances isn't required. Um, uh, that side porch, which we're talking about how that reduces the width of the driveway. That's an existing feature of the house that's there right now. So I think, you know, the, 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 the strategy working with Amicus is really just to use and keep as much of what's there now. You know, so like we're thinking, we were just thinking that, you know, it exists. It, it's a means of entrance into the, into the, into the building. So it's currently not being used, but in this schematic plan, we are showing it being used. It doesn't need to be used. If that was something that needed to be removed to, to increase the width of the driveway. Uh, I'm sure that's something that Paul would be open to.
Let me ask you this. Tito, has Sean looked at whether that side porch contributes to the landmark status of the property, the historical landmark press?
I don't think he's, I, I don't think he's taken that specifically into consideration, but looking at it right now on street view. Um, I, I think Card would take issue with eliminating that.
I can see why. I agree with you for sure.
Um. You know, I, I will note that the parking spaces themselves are there. It's just that they're made non-compliant by this feature. But it's possible for a vehicle, a passenger vehicle, to make it pass that staircase.
And you know, that's. Hi, this is Joe. I was gonna ask you that, you, the exact question and you answered it. A car could get back there. Is there a possibility of a waiver on that space because of that?
Oh, uh. If, if what the planning commission wants to do is. So the zoning board would have to grant that, that waiver to allow a driveway, uh, that is narrower than the minimum. The planning commission does not have authority to grant that waiver specifically. You do have authority to waive the required parking spaces. So that you could waive four spaces in the back if you chose. You, you would waive those though, knowing that, that they technically, that they do exist. Um, but you would just be granting the waiver to get around that. That requirement that's not being met because of the width of the driveway.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
It sure does.
Um. Kyle, do you, do you have the measurement of that, that section of driveway? I didn't see that noted on the site plan.
Well, it looks like what I have on the site plan from the building to the extent of the property. And please keep in mind that this is just approximate based on being there, using the GIS map. I think it's around thirteen feet and I, I mean, I have it in the drawing. I definitely drew that. I just don't have the measurement in front of me as to how deep that porch is on the side. I mean, it would happen, you're saying that it needs to be at least nine feet, so I'm just kind of wondering in my head if that porch is really projects four feet off the side of the building, but I, I can't answer that. I don't have my drawing file in front of me.
Okay, yeah, just, just looking at the drawing and looking at, at the, uh, spaces uh, shown on the plan and that, that are nine by eighteen. Uh, it looks like this space, like a parking space may not fit adjacent to that staircase, but if you have the measurement, um, and that's nine feet next to that staircase between the property line and the staircase, then, then you don't have an issue.
Okay.
The other thing that strikes me is that it may be the, the overhead view maybe showing the extension of the roof and not so much the base portion of the, of the porch where you drive by. It looks as though that roof extends much further than the actual porch does.
Correct.
Well, obviously you're not gonna be driving for the tall trucks back there, but you may be able to get, I'd be interested to know from that white line over to the base of that porch, how, how wide that is. And Tito, I believe you already explained, they could potentially get a variance for driveway width. Is that correct?
They could get, yeah, they, they would have to go to the zoning board, but that's a variance that can be granted.
And Tito, what's the required driveway width?
Uh, for, uh, it's, it's nine feet for residential use.
Okay, for residential.
Tito, my other question though was even if you had nine foot, would you all be able to stack two Kia cars or could you stack the five or seven like they're showing?
Okay, the parking is allowed, um, for one and two unit dwellings. Uh, since they're applying for congregate living and not a two-family, then, then that's a good point, then tandem parking technically is not allowed.
But there's plenty of room in the backyard to make, if they take down the garage, which indicates that the garage is coming down, there is room to make space for four parking spaces and possibly keep that tree as well.
Well, I believe that you could have a stack of two off to the side or you could have another stack of two next to it, so you would get four spaces. They're showing you can get additional three cars in there, but I don't know if those are considered legal spaces because of how deep there's, you could just stacking of four deep. Car number at the back of the property is gonna have a hard time backing out.
Yeah. Um, one other question about that bypass, uh, rather than a variance, is a, is an easement from the neighbor? Does that count if the, they got an easement for the extra, let's say, two feet that they needed to?
I was actually looking at that too, but if you notice, there's a little tiny wall that starts just past the porch and runs to the back property line. There's actually a height differential there as well.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Yeah. Okay.
Attention, question Nick, yes, that, that would work, uh, if the site allowed it.
Okay. All right, well, um, I'm not sure how everyone else is feeling, but to me, it seems like if you're gonna have that many bedrooms potentially rented. The whole reason that we recently revised the code was that you, you needed to provide at least the number of required parking spaces on site. So I personally don't have any problem moving this forward to a, a public hearing for the next meeting. But I'm probably not going to approve it or vote yes unless they can provide some onsite parking. Because I know Murray Street, especially this portion of Murray Street, parking is definitely gonna be an issue. And I think if it goes to public hearing, we're probably gonna hear from some of the neighbors about parking. If we don't require it onsite, um, so. That's my point of view on the parking onsite. Um, anybody else wanna weigh in on that?
Hey, it's Kelly. I had to call in because I got frozen on the screen, so just so you guys know, I'm on a call. But I, I agree with Nick on that parking spot.
All right.
And this is Paul. I'm also here. I had a hard time finding my Zoom link. Thank you, Tito, for sending that. Um, but I think you nailed it. Yeah, I'm, I'm agreed.
Sounds like the dogs agree too.
Tito, what drives the fact that they need five, five spaces? Is it the number of bedrooms or the number of units?
Uh, the number of beds. The, the parking requirement is calculated based on beds regardless of the number of, of units.
What would get them down to four?
Um. So.
Would be elimination of one bedroom?
At least one bed would have to be removed.
I was just trying to think of other options where they could still move forward with the project.
I, I will say that, um, per Nick's suggestion, um, adding an additional parking in the rear may be an option and even if that would cause the plan to go past the minimum or the maximum lot coverage. I think that, uh, given the, the parking situation on Murray Street that you would have, that the zoning board would be more open to, uh, a lot coverage variance than a parking variance. I, I don't speak for them obviously, but, um. So I, I think that, that may be an option is, is adding additional parking in the rear.
Kyle, how does that sound to you?
Oh, I mean, it sounds, sounds pretty logical. I guess I would just ask you, like, I mean, obviously Paul's not on the representative for Amicus. So we're gonna have to chat over with all this, but like, you know, if you're saying that the next step would be to bring this to a public hearing, like, how would you recommend that we actually prepare for that? I mean, one thing that jumps out at me is like, you know, you're asking about what, what's actually the condition from, you know, the, the, the believed like edge of that property and, and the edge of that. Um, and the edge of that porch that's creating that bottleneck situation. I mean, one thing that I would definitely wanna do before then is actually go out and look at that in the field and, you know, have some kind of I, I don't know. I'm just, I guess I'm asking you how you think we should prepare for, for the next step.
Tito, I can, I can answer that. The reason I asked the board members to, or the panel, commission members to, to sort of make those comments or give you those comments was so that it is, you're free to submit new material for consideration and to modify the plan you submitted. And then the one that we get referred to open to the, to the pub, public hearing. And when you petition, uh, that's one of the main reasons why we're meeting tonight. This is pretty clearly a type two, so it'll probably be a motion for that. But it's also to raise issues that you can address at next month's meeting so that we don't go through this and have to delay it another month. That you could have answers to some of these questions and maybe just address them in your presentation next month.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so I mean, it sounds like-
What is the deadline that he should have that material to you by so that it can be included in next month's packet?
Well, technically the deadline passed, but, um, if we have it. I'd say by the twenty-fifth, we can work with that.
All right. That should be fine.
Yes.
I don't think it's that we need to do a lot of drastic changing, but it, it may, this conversation may influence, you know, what we present and how we wanna present it. Um.
And Kyle, just to, just to sort of reiterate this, the only issue at this point is not just the width of the driveway, uh, next to that entrance. It's also that the spaces cannot be, you can't stack that many spaces for congregate living. That's, that's my mistake. You can for a two-family. But since this is congregate living, uh, stacked spaces don't count. Um, and so that's why it's looking like the, the parking area in the rear is gonna be necessary unless you can get a parking variance.
Tito, just for stacking, you could stack two, but you can't stack any more than that. Is that correct?
No, you, stacking is only permitted for one and two unit dwellings.
Ah, okay.
Yes, now, now that this is, they're seeking approval for congregate living. It's technically not, uh, uh, a residential use. It's considered sort of a higher level of use in it and then it's required. You can't stack, miss next bases.
And when you say stack, you mean like one person goes in, the next person behind them, the next person behind that person?
That's correct.
Like in a line.
Yep.
We would need to actually show in the back five distinct spaces that someone can use that driveway to come all the way into the back, park into a reserved spot. And then also remove themselves and leave without other people having to back out and then that person leaves.
That's correct.
All right, and I-
Now, Tito, I hate that you raised this question. What is the aisle width for, for that type of use for driveway? That change the aisle width? Ingress and egress?
We can take a look at that and I can send those requirements over to them.
Okay.
But, but the other thing is that that can be something that you ask for relief from, from the zoning board, is, is some of those dimensional requirements, where you could have a slightly narrower aisle width or something like that to allow you to fit the spaces that you need in the rear. So rather than asking for a waiver of parking spaces, you can ask for a reduction in certain dimensional requirements.
Is there possible that they're going to need a lot coverage variance as well?
That's possible.
And Tito, what's the timeframe? So if they wanted to file for a variance, when do they need to get that stuff in?
Take a quick look. Um, I think by next Tuesday, we would need the, the zoning board application and the revised site plan.
Okay.
The other option, if they wanted to, they could adjourn the planning commission's next meeting or their appearance at the next meeting and go to the ZBA and then come back at the following month's meeting for the planning commission. I know that gives a delay, but I mean, it's, it's an option.
So, Tito, will you, you'll be in contact with the applicant tomorrow or sometime this week to talk this all over?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments about what the applicant would like to do? All right. Well, seeing no other questions or comments, I will make a motion that the action is a type-two action under seeker and that no further environmental review is required.
I'll second.
I'll second now.
All right, seconded by, let's go with Paul first. All right, all in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
All right, I am also a yes. That's five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at 5:20 at the April Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All right, seconded by Mario. All in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm also a yes. So five in favor, zero opposed. All right, so Kyle, some, Tito will be in touch with you guys about revisions to the plan and to talk about possible zoning variances that might be required. And then if, if you can move forward without variances, I think we'll see you at the next meeting in April. And if you need variances, you might get, you might get pushed into the following month's meeting.
I see, because we would want to do the variances before going to the public hearing because otherwise, that's just, that's, that's the preferred order, correct?
Yes, and, and like I said, if you can get everything in by next Tuesday, we can, we can sort of squeeze you in on the agenda for the April zoning board meeting, which would be before the planning commission meeting.
Oh, okay, gotcha. All right. Excellent.
That works even better. But, all right, so Tito, Tito will give you a call, and you can talk about it a little bit more, in a little bit more detail.
That sounds like a plan. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, well, that was our only agenda item. Does anybody have any other business they want to talk about? All right, well, then we'll see everybody in April after we get a motion.
Before we let everybody go, the ability to have these meetings online is, has, was extended by the governor until the 16th of this month. If it doesn't get extended, people should be prepared to actually be in person next month. Which might be a big adjustment to schedules. That's all, like, the reason I bring it up. I'm a bit of a habit. Welcome one, but still.
That said, I'm, I'm on vacation next, next month. I'll, I'll miss that meeting unfortunately. I was looking forward to see y'all in person.
Excellent. Well, if there's a motion to adjourn, we can all take off.
I shall move.
All right, motion by Paul. Seconded by?
Joe, seconded.
All right, all in favor? Bye?
All right.
Bye.
All right, see everyone in April.
Take care, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye, take care.